Good evening, and should like to call this Fairfield City Council Housing Authority Meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Moy, Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Ladue from the American Samoan Church here in Fairfield. Pastor, if you would come forward, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, vision, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group, as a community, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth for your greater good, glory, and for the service of humanity. We ask all of these things in your wonderful name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by the Vice Mayor, please. Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to begin, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thanks for watching from home. Just want to continue celebrating our amazing youth from this community. This time, I have kudos to all of the beautiful, strong, intelligent, lovely young ladies who took place in the Solano County Pageant on May 19th. It was a real showing of the diversity and just the talent that we have in this community, the strong young ladies that stood up and competed. They did a great job. I want to say especially congratulations to Ms. Solano County of 2019. Her name is Ms. Stevie Nettles. She's a graduating senior from Armio High School. She has been accepted to Temple University, and she will be studying television broadcast in her future endeavors at Temple. So to her and to all of the young ladies who took part in those ceremonies, again, congratulations. You're fabulous, and thank you for representing so well Solano County. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see all of you. Blessings on all of you. And I saw something that was a little shocking today that I wanted to bring up, and that is that 50% of us, I don't mean you all in the room, because I know you all know, that 50% of us don't know what Memorial Day is. And Memorial Day, we're going to celebrate it next week, and it's a big thing in our town because we are, as you know, a military town. And so I want to tell you how I celebrate it and what it means. It is a rural celebration. It's a national holiday, and it's for people who died in war to support our country. So it's Americans who died in war, and some who are not Americans but who fought under the American flag. And so we remember them because we wouldn't be here without them. I like to go down on Memorial Day, and my uncle's name is on the war memorial here in Fairfield. His name is Tony Perez, and he was not born in this country but came here, and he fought for her, and he gave his life in World War II. And my grandparents were immigrants, and so he was born elsewhere and came here. He was actually born on the island of Hawaii, but it wasn't one of our state when he was born. I never met him, had a dream of him lately, but we always remember him. And I remember, of course, his parents, my grandparents, and the grief that they went through. It was the biggest funeral that this area had ever had. Sassoon City was bigger than Fairfield. And I guess everybody was at my uncle's funeral. I have pictures of it, which is kind of weird, but they did that during World War II and prior to that. So when we celebrate, I hope you'll think about the people who came before us, men, women, and yes, some children, who gave their lives for us beginning in the Revolutionary War. And they're still fighting for us now. And so God bless them and their souls and all of their families, and I hope that you're safe this Memorial Day.
Thank you. Well said. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity, along with Rick Vicaro, the other night, to attend a presentation and award ceremony from Fairfield Sassoon Unified School District. Hundred and thirty students. They were absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. And yeah, I said Rick Vicaro, he said, no, the mayor. That's right. We've been to a lot of meetings. I don't want to cheat anybody. GPAs, four oh and above, but to listen to the schools that they're going to attend from Georgetown to the Naval Academy, the Air Force Academy, UC Systems, I mean, it just runs the gamut. These are the kids that you probably never hear of or that you never see. They don't get in trouble. They go to school, and they're very good at what they do. And it was a good feeling just to look at, look at their enthusiasm, and everybody's so solemn in their walking up. And soon as they started giving out prizes, then they acted like kids, which was pretty nice. I mean, they were excited, but they deserved everything that they got, and it was through very, very hard work. So kudos to them and kudos to the school district for putting this on, very well attended. Willow Hall, the community center, was pretty much standing room only. I also had a meeting with executives from Verizon, and for the techies out there, 5G is coming. And currently, it's in Sacramento, it's in San Diego, it's in Dublin, and they want to bring it here to Fairfield. And I don't really know much about it, fifth generation, but the difference between 4G and 5G is the difference between night and day. And one of the things that was very interesting is it is so fast, it's in a blink of an eye, quick, fast, that if you happen to work from home, you don't want to go into your office, you can do a lot of work from home, you keep cars off the freeway. But it also goes into, they have an overview map, and it shows where all the 4G traffic is, and it's pretty much just be one big red spot in the city of Fairfield. And for you that use it on your cell phones and don't even know it if you're not using Wi-Fi, this is the next generation. So I encourage our city to look at it. They actually pay to put it on. It's a canister that goes on a light pole, but this is what's coming. And then Rick Vicaro and I attended League of California Cities Luncheon the other day in Mare Island, and their guest speaker was Senator Scott Weiner. And he wanted to talk about SB 50, which is, how does it do with housing? And unfortunately or fortunately, however, yeah, wherever you fall on this, his bill was dead, but it deals with housing. And we are now starting to see the number one complaint is housing, housing, housing. Weather deals with the homeless, first-time homebuyers, people that actually work in the Bay Area or Walnut Creek, but they drive to Fairfield because this is where they can afford a house. And then the people that actually work in Fairfield, can they afford a house? And so I had a meeting with a very large builder the other day and then a developer, and I asked them, can you build a house for $400,000? And they kind of looked at you, and you know, one of the things that they say is, you have such onerous building requirements, planning requirements, money, money, money. And so in talking with the city manager, I know Sacramento was finally letting loose with some money, whether it be HUD, whether it be first-time homebuyers, there's money out there to be had, you need to probably kick over rocks, but I think that's something we need to do. A complaint that we hear is, your city employees don't even live in Fairfield. I don't know if they can afford to buy a house here. You go to buy a new house, they're five, six, $700,000. Why can't we look at building a house, brand new, that city employees can afford, that nurses, teachers? Or better yet, some of you folks in here have kids coming out of college and they want to come back home. Where are they going to live? Or your elderly parents that no longer want to live in a house, but they want to live in something smaller. So I think this is the direction, I know it's the direction I want to go, and I want to start kicking over those rocks. There's something to be done, and if we don't do it now, two years, five years, whatever, somebody will be sitting here saying, these houses are a million bucks, and we can't afford to live here. And then lastly, we have volunteers here tonight that make the city good, and they don't get paid for it, they just do it out of the kindness of their hearts and their sense of community worth and involvement. And I'm not going to steal your thunder, Karen, but I just want to say, we, as a council, acknowledge you and appreciate what you do. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vicaro, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have actually a special report, but before I do that, I just wanted to get a little personal, just acknowledge, shout out to my son who got his admin credential, his back state on Friday, so that was a special thing for our family. Also, I had the privilege of sitting on a scholarship committee for CASA, California Association of Sanitary Agencies, and we looked at eleven applications. And most of these applications were from students throughout the state of California who, you know, needed the money for school. And a lot of these students were also first generation, and it was pretty amazing. It was very hard to pick, but we actually did pick three very qualified students, and it was quite a process, but it was very special. You know, I asked Stanley Jackson to come here from Armio High School, he's sitting in the audience. Stanley, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do this.
Oh, absolutely. This is very important.
Yeah. I met Stanley at a scholarship ceremony. I was asked to be there because it was memorials for Jeff Gammon, who was a teacher at Armio High School, who was a teacher when I was principal there, and I know how much he loved kids and cared about kids. And, you know, he passed away last year, or a year and a half ago. And so I talked to Stanley, and we were talking about, you know, how he liked school, and then I found out he was Armio Student of the Year. And I think when you're Armio Student of the Year, you need to be acknowledged at a city council meeting. So I wanted him to be acknowledged. And I know, being from the Armio family, I see Mr. Wade, I know he's an Armio grad right there, so, you know, had to do this, of course, but I don't know if you want to say a couple words or not? You sure? Okay. Well, I'll thank everybody on his behalf, and his family's here too, so give you guys a hand, okay, for being here. And good luck to you in the future. I'm glad you came. All right. Thank you very much.
Wait a minute. Would you come back to the microphone, please? We can't let you walk away without giving you an opportunity to speak to all of us in Fairfield.
I asked them to speak.
So I just wanted to point out that, like, at Armio, there's like a bunch of places that you can grow up, grow as like a person, and that's how it's been for me, because like, I wasn't originally raised out in Fairfield, but like, we moved out here, and I didn't know anybody, and I was just sitting in the halls by myself. But then as time gone by, I joined more programs and stuff, and then I met new people, got my name out there, and I actually started meeting new people, and that's how I am today. Like, if you met me in freshman year and sophomore year compared to last year and this year, you would not notice me. But I just want to thank everybody else here for letting me be here. Thank you so much for telling me about this. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, and thank you for setting a good example for all students to follow. It is achievable, isn't it? Well, I would like to brag a little bit, too. We talked earlier about the award ceremony last week and the recognition that those 130 students with very high grade point averages, they represent our communities, Sassoon City, Fairfield, as well as the county area. They represent us so very, very well. And it was particularly gratifying to recognize so many of them who are going on to higher education. And what do you suppose are the primary fields of endeavor that they'd like to pursue? Just a hazard a guess. Engineering, math, science, nursing, and teaching. So we know that we're producing some pretty good future leaders. And I would also like to do a shout out for a young fellow who became an Eagle Scout when he was barely 13 years old. That's the earliest you can become an Eagle. His name is Eric Corbus. He's not here this evening, but Eric is also a Fairfield Youth Commissioner. Eric is being sworn in Thursday evening as the student representative of the Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District Governing Board. And that's pretty significant, pretty great, isn't it? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I wanted to acknowledge Fairfield Community Seventh-day Adventist Church. They've just adopted a section of East Tabor Avenue as part of the Adopt a Street program, which is another program I handle. And also, our very own Tony Wade, adopted Davis Drive, and he's here tonight, and I'll be recognizing him a little bit later for Adopt a Part. So thank you to everyone.
Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you. I have a few things to talk about. Yesterday, I was invited to attend a quarterly homeless meeting that's put on by the city of Fairfield, and in attendance was about sixty-five to seventy service providers, representatives from Solano County, and representatives from the city of Fairfield. It was very impressive to see all of them working together and talking about issues and coordinating services. There was presentations by our Homes Intervention Team. Public Works made a presentation from their Heart Team, which was a great presentation. And then also, there was a Presentation on Quality of Life Team from the city manager's office. But I want to commend everybody who's involved in that for keeping that going and working together and trying to become much more efficient and coordinating our services among all the different agencies. It was very impressive being there, and I think they should be commended for that meeting. Also, in the afternoon, we had a Measure P Committee, and they have a lot of energy in that committee, and they have a lot of interest in going out and discussing with residents of the community about Measure P and what it's doing. And so we'll be coming back to you with some ideas around that. But at the meeting, Roy Skow, which I think is how you pronounce his name, who is also on the Youth Commission and a member of the Measure P Committee, it was his last meeting. And it's his last meeting because he's heading off to Yale. And he's already got himself involved in the local community around Yale, and he's going to be a representative liaison between the university and the community. So I think this person is going to go places. And near and dear to me, his major is going to be economics, which is my major, so. And he's a great person, so. And that's my report.
Are there any changes?
No changes. Presentations, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Presentation number one.
Stuff the Bus presentation, including recognition of Safeway Green Valley for outstanding support of this event. And our presenter is Diane Feinstein.
Good evening, Mayor Price and city council members. I'm serving as interim transportation manager, and tonight, I'm very pleased to report to you on the continuing success of Fairfield and Sassoon Transit Annual Stuff the Bus Event that occurred this year on April 12th and 13th. Fast staff worked this year with three local nonprofits, Shelter Solano, Community Action North Bay, and Solano Dreams Center Nomadic Shelter, to collect food and toiletry items that help these groups meet the needs that they're finding out. With the help of staff and volunteers, food and toiletry items totaling 8,100 pounds, which is more than four tons, were collected over two days. For the first time, two fast buses were needed to hold collected donations. 2019 was the city's fourth year sponsoring this event. Channel 26 staff were on site and prepared a short video that we want to share with you tonight, so you in the community understand the positive impact this event means to us.
outpouring of food and toiletry items donated. This event has grown each year and would not be possible without the ongoing support of our valued partners and community sponsors, who we'd like to recognize. Our partners were MV Transportation, 95.3 KUIC, Safeway of Northern California and Green Valley, who you will be hearing more about in a few moments. Our sponsors included the Fairfield Community, city of Fairfield employees, city of Fairfield Youth Commission, who coordinated pickup and drop-off of City Hall donations, Fairfield Employees Association, Fairfield General Management Association, Fairfield Sassoon Rotary Club Foundation, Costco Wholesale, Crystal Geyser Water, Safeway of Northern California, and also Safeway Green Valley in Fairfield. So you can see that we get tremendous donations and support for this event. I would also like to thank and recognize our dedicated and hard-working transportation technician, Lynette Seim, who has coordinated Stuff the Bus all four years. Lynette is truly one of those special employees I can count on and know she will give 110% effort to any assignment she's given. And I know she hates that I'm doing this right now, but she deserves it. Lynette effectively coordinates all aspects of the event with nonprofits, volunteers, MV Transportation, and staff. This coordination is critical for this event to be successful. Tonight, the city is also recognizing Safeway Green Valley for their exceptional support of Stuff the Bus. At this time, I want to ask Safeway Green Valley Store Director Andrea Rodriguez to come up to be acknowledged and to accept a recognition plaque. Thank you for being here. From the inception of the Stuff the Bus event in 2016, Safeway Green Valley has been an excellent partner. The success of the event each year could not be accomplished without the involvement of Safeway management and staff. Safeway Green Valley staff go way above and beyond, from posting event notices leading up to the event, pre-shopping with the agencies and fast staff with donation money, making in-store announcements the day of the event to engage their customers. And this year, we did not know they were going to do this, but they pre-packaged grocery bags, so people coming into the store could just pick up a bag for $10 and participate and come out and bring it out to the bus. It was really wonderful. So we, Fast Staff, have witnessed that these events definitely make a difference. The plaque we are presenting reads, "With great appreciation, the city of Fairfield presents Safeway Green Valley Award in Recognition of Exceptional Partnership, 2016 to 19 Stuff the Bus Events." Thank you again, Safeway Green Valley, for your extraordinary support and partnership. We look forward to partnering with you for years to come, and we truly thank you.
Thank you very much. And presentation one A, please, Madam Clerk.
I have the privilege of doing the next presentation for
I have the privilege of doing the next presentation for Adopt a Park recognition, so I'm going to switch hats here. Good evening, everyone. In addition to being the city clerk, I also run the Adopt a Park Program, Adopt a Street, and Volunteer Services. And tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing several groups and individuals that have been longtime adopters of our various city parks. In fact, right now, we only have one park that's not adopted, and that is the Rose Garden across from the mall. So, we have ninety-six percent of our parks adopted, which is awesome. The first group I'd like to recognize is Kiwanis Club of Solano County. Is Erin Garcia here? Nope. Okay. We'll go on to the next one. Anyway, I would like to thank all of them. They've been very active in their adopted park of Tabor Neighborhood Park. Next, I'd like to recognize Iglesia Ni Cristo Church in Christ. They adopted Meadow Glen Neighborhood Park many years ago. We have head deacon Robert Gillis. Do you have anyone else with you? No? Okay. Next, we have Pastor Alex Ledoux from Samoan Christian Fellowship Church, and he gave our invocation this evening. So, he's doing double duty. And his church adopted Laurel Creek Community Park many years ago. Next, we have teacher Chris Romo from Fairfield High School, and he teaches the Functional Academics class. And he's here tonight with his student Jake, who helped out at the last cleanup, and they adopted Veterans Memorial Park several years ago. So, we welcome them. Thank you. Next, we have Lowe's Fairfield Store three-one-six-four, which is located on North Texas Street. Paul Davis is their store manager, and he has some employees with him this evening, and they adopted Sunrise Neighborhood Park a couple of years ago. And I can send you these photos, too. I'm not sure if Rosa Maya is here? Is Rosa here? Okay, so she adopted Dover Neighborhood Park, and her club is called Paz y Vida, Peace and Life. And actually, her daughter works in community development. Or Quality of Life, sorry. Next, we have Tony Wade. He adopted Meadow Neighborhood Park, and their group is called I Grew Up in Fairfield Too Facebook Group. And Tony brought several of his members that help him clean up. I apologize. I got so excited, I was forgetting to put the pictures up. But I've caught up now. Next, unfortunately, the Brantleys could not be here. Patricia and Anthony Brantley from Revolution and Martial Art, they adopted Vintage Green Valley Neighborhood Park several years ago, and they're very active in the community. So, we thank them. Next, we have California School Employees Association, Chapter three oh two. They adopted Hillview Neighborhood Park. And if Erin Garcia is not here, I thought perhaps one other member would come. Nope. Okay. Moving on. I know Raymond Cordermanche is here from the Matt Garcia Foundation, and they adopted Allen Witt Community Park. They've also adopted a street. And also, Sakina Ali is here. Oh, and they helped you, too. Oh, wow. Okay, double duty. Oh, that's awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm not sure if anyone was able to come from the Fairfield Sassoon Twilight Rotary Club. Oh, yay, Glenn is here. Yay. And they adopted Donald Nature Park a few years ago. And in this picture are Vic and Kim Jones, Dr. JD and Margaret Lopez, and Glenn and Jill Faison. And last but not least, we have our Gone for Good Group, and Jenny Huff, the program coordinator, is here. And they adopted Lee Bell Neighborhood Park about two years ago. And Gone for Good is another great community partner. They handle the paper shredding event that's the last Saturday of the month in downtown Fairfield, and many other things. Thank you, Jenny. And that's my contact information. As I said, I only have one park available for adoption, but I do have many, many streets. So, please email me or give me a call. Thank you so much.
Well done, Madam Clerk. And we turn now to process for public comments, please. You're a busy lady this evening, Madam Clerk.
Speakers may address items on the agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes total with one minute to summarize a remark. Thank you.
And our first speaker will be Mr. Edward Russell, Jr., please. Mr. Russell, to be followed by Mercedes Maiden, please.
Good evening, everyone. Nothing written this evening, just real, honest talk. So, everybody started with the educational stuff, and outstanding young man there. Everybody's giving a shout-out, so I'll give a shout-out to my oldest son. He just finished his senior year at Tuskegee University. That Tuskegee of Booker T. Washington, George Washington Carver. He'll finish up next year. He took up a second major. He is also doing Electrical Engineering. Our youngest son of the hate crime that was committed against him in Vannon has been accepted on academic scholarship to Cal Baptist down in Riverside. So, me and my wife are doing our part to keep our young men off the streets and not taking up too much time with the fine police officers. With that said, it's time. I heard everybody saying how wonderful it is for the young ladies doing the pageant and good grades and everything. It's time to stop patting ourselves on the back as a board, as a council, and go to the mat for these young children. Two things me and my wife would like to move forward on, and hopefully, this council as a group would support us and someone take the lead, and that is, it needs to be a zero tolerance on hate, any form of hate, crime, speech, written, digital, what have you. It cannot be accepted. That is the beginning, especially for young children on a path to start a difference amongst themselves. Also with that, I believe they go hand-in-hand, is a ban on assault weapons. I am all for the Second Amendment. I believe in the right to bear arms. However, I don't think you need a high-capacity magazine to protect yourself or to kill a bear. So, again, those two things, I would hope that one of you fine folks on this council would take the lead on and agendize and open it up through public comment to start. And I understand it may take a while to make this change, but I think the children of our community deserve that, because in order for them to get to the point where that young man was of being the Student of the Year, first they need to make it to that level, free of harm and threat of violence. So, please, I beg of you, for our children's sake, to start the communication, to open it up, and instead of pointing fingers like I have been doing, me and my wife are here to work with you, help with you, whatever we can to do our part, because it is time. There's just too many school shootings, and it's always a reactive solution, you know? I'm getting sick and tired of so-and-so strong and so-and-so strong, and that's enough of that so-and-so strong. Let's do something to protect our children. Let's be proactive. Put them first, and not your political endeavors to reign to the top, to be mayor or to be president. Put our children first. They are most important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Tim?
Yeah, Mr. Russell, I don't think there's anybody here that disagrees with you. I would love, absolutely love, for you to take that message to Sacramento. I would love to see it throughout the United States. Children grow up and learn from their environment. And, you know, two weeks ago, you came in and you said what you said, and I had questions. But I don't have questions tonight. I actually understand where you're coming from. I think we, as a council, do. I would also, I won't say we pat ourselves on the back. We did a lot of patting of backs of children and their parents that work very hard, as I think you and your wife did. Kids don't grow up in a vacuum. And I don't think there's anybody here that would disagree. There is no tolerance for hate or bigotry. And your son suffered. I am hopeful that your son will come through this, and I think that he will. And when you talk about the Second Amendment, I wish we could wave a magic wand, do something, and it would no longer occur, and children are hurt every day. I didn't want the mayor just to thank you, because usually, we don't respond. But I don't want people to think that you spoke and we don't listen, because we do listen. I would like to think that we had the power to ban assault weapons or harm to children. We don't have that power, but we have the knowledge. And more importantly, you see citizens in here tonight that were volunteering. And this goes on day in and day out, and they're the young son heroes. And I think that the school district is very aware of what happened, and I don't want to hash that again, but this happened at Travis Unified, and they're dealing with it, and however they do. We don't have authority there, but we are aware of what happened. And I just wanted to acknowledge, I think, from all my colleagues, that we feel what you're trying to do. You keep doing what you're doing in the respectful, well-thought, well-spoken manner that you have shown in the past two months, and I wish you luck there. And anything that we can do to help, I think we all would do. But I just wanted to acknowledge you, and it's not just, hey, thanks, have a nice day, and we move on. Okay? Mr. Russell, thank you, sir, and best of luck to you and your kids in school. Thank you. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to say that.
Mr. Mayor, I would...
Vice Mayor first, please, and then we'll come to you.
Thank you, Councilman Tim, for the response, and thank you, Mr. Russell. And zero tolerance on hate crimes and protecting innocent young students from gun violence, those are conversations that we should have. Those are conversations that we should have. And like my colleague said, of course, this city council is powerless to do anything about the Second Amendment as a council, but we are the people, and the people do have the power, because this is still a democracy in the United States of America, believe it or not sometimes. So, I welcome an opportunity to work with you. You ask for somebody to take the lead or to work with, I'm your person, and so are we all. I mean, we're all willing to have these conversations. It's a matter of us having the conversations and figuring out what can we do? We've got a lot of smart people in this room. We've got a lot of smart people in this city. And I, for one, believe that when people, for the right reasons, have adequate resources and their heart is in the right place, things change. So, I would love to have a town hall meeting and talk about this. I would love to discuss with you and with the city manager and with our police chief, you know? How can, what can we do? What are our options? So, I thank you for bringing these issues to us, and just know that I can, I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues. Let do something. Yeah, because that's why we're sitting up here, right? To do something, for God's sake. All right? Thank you.
Councilman Moy, please.
So, along those lines, I'd like us to go ahead and agendize something, and that would be a resolution, I'm saying that we absolutely hundred percent condemn a kind of hate, hate crimes, no matter who it against, any protected class. So, I'm asking the mayor that you do that.
Will you bring it back? Yes. And Mr. Russell, I'd like to make one quick comment for you, please. You're a very effective speaker. I assume you write very well, too. Use the bully pulpit wherever you can, and that includes the schools as well as the places of worship. And I'm reminded of a Broadway musical called South Pacific. There was a lyric in there, and the lyric goes something to the effect, talking about Americans, "You have to be taught to hate before you are six, seven, or eight." So, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, last, I'm not going to take up much time, because my colleague...
Yeah, last, I'm not going to take up much time because my colleague said a lot. You know, but you said something tonight, Mr. Russell, that rang with me because having worked in the Jordan Community Schools for years and you said about not being, you know, reactive, and that's kind of when I left that system, that's exactly what I was feeling, like we were being reactive and we needed to be proactive. And I think when you said that tonight, that kind of hit something inside me because I remember saying that actually to my wife when I left that system, saying, you know, we need to be proactive to help our young people that are dealing with this kind of hate and, you know, dealing with other people who wear shirts that they shouldn't be wearing because it represents hate or wearing symbols that represent hate. And I think that that is something, if we do that as a council and we become proactive, then that'll be good for everybody in this city. So thank you.
And our speaker will be Mercedes Maiden, please. And it's good to see you again, and I understand you're going to share some good news tonight.
Yes, I am. I'm Mercedes K. Maiden, and I came here two weeks ago on the step to discuss some situations that was going on in my apartment for over four years. As of today and since Friday, I have worked with Don LaBarre, dude, and a lady named Barbara, and they put me and my daughter, right here, into a stable shelter, a two-bedroom shelter that is not full of mode or anything. That's what I was dealing with, and they are helping me take the necessary steps to get placement into a permanent home. And I did not know, when I left here, I had like an anxiety attack, and I'm happy today. I have peace that I know that everything's going to be okay, and they're helping me with everything. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to come here two weeks ago, and I wanted to say, the ladies, I don't even know if they, oh, they are here. Thank you very much. Hi. And I just thank you guys, and I'm going to come back, tell you how everything turns out. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm glad you have a new beginning. Turn now, Madam Clerk, to the holding of the joint meeting, and then we'll go right into the Housing Authority and Consent Calendar, please.
The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
I don't have any request to speak cards. Any council comments? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted, been moved by Councilman Vicaro, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And we'll now reconvene the meeting of the City Council, please. Madam Clerk?
Just need to jot down the time. Council Consent Calendar notice, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Again, I have no request to speak cards. Entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted, moved by Councilman Vicaro, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn to new business, item number 14. Madam Clerk, please.
Recommendations for the City Council of the City of Fairfield to appoint a subcommittee to provide direction on the recruitment effort for the new city manager. And our presenter is Director of Human Resources, Farbod Perusman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we have certain time limits. Our interim city manager will not be able to be here for a very long time, and so we have several proposals from executive recruitment firms that specialize in the area of finding city managers, and we were requesting to, for this body to appoint a subcommittee to help us vet that, those firms, and then come back this body for the rec. And I'm happy to answer any-
Well, colleagues, I would like to nominate the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Vicaro to serve as that subcommittee. We've been through this before. We know the process, and all five of us are certainly going to be involved, so if that's agreeable to you, entertain a motion, please. Is it moved and seconded? All in favor? Our subcommittee is established, so we're ready to move forward. Thank you very much. Item number 15, Madam Clerk.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2019-05 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield levying special taxes within City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2019-01 One Lake. And our presenter is our Director of Finance, Emily Combs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The action tonight is the final step to establish the One Lake CFD in the future annexation area. So at prior meetings, the council approved the resolutions to initiate the process reforming the One Lake CFD, then held the public hearings to establish the CFD and declare the necessity to incur a bond debt and conducted a landowner election. So the purpose of action tonight is to introduce an ordinance ordering the levy of special taxes within the One Lake CFD, including areas that annex into the CFD in the future. The recommendation is to waive a full reading, read by title only, and introduce the ordinance for the first reading.
Been moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to public hearings, item number 16. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2019-05 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield levying special taxes within City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2019-01. And it's One Lake, and again, our presenter is, oh, wait, am I reading the same? Oh, dear. Sorry. Trying to rush. Okay. Item 16, Public Hearings. Receive Report and Hold Public Hearing Regarding Triennial Water System Report on Public Health Goals. And our presenter is Felix Reisenberg, Assistant Public Works Director.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, again, I'm Felix Reisenberg, Assistant Public Works Director. And so tonight, we have a public hearing, and I'm going to give a, well, basically a quick overview of a report that's in your packet. State law requires the city to prepare a triennial water system report on public health goals, which are different than maximum contaminant levels, and I'll talk about that just real briefly in a second. And then we'll also need to hold a public hearing, which we're doing tonight, to allow discussion of the report, if there is any. So the report is a compilation of the last three years of annual water quality reports. And again, public health goals are idealistic goals to strive for and are far lower, in many cases, than maximum contaminant levels, and where we have to balance the ability to treat, measure, all the different things that go into setting a regulation. But the public health goals are a very idealistic goal that we always strive for, but we're not required to meet necessarily. So in this case, Fairfield provides exceptionally high-quality water that meets and exceeds all current drinking water regulations and standard. There's roughly about 90 contaminants, of which public health goals have been established. Fairfield met the goals for all of these, above and beyond the treatment regulations. It met the goals for all but three constituents. So again, just to reiterate, our water quality is superb, continues to be, has been for a long time. No action is necessarily needed at this point in time, and if you have any questions about the report, if we have any discussion in the public.
Any comments or questions for Felix, which is city attorney? Okay. I will open the public hearing. Do not have any request to speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Being done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Felix. Item number 17. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to make a couple of quick comments here?
So item number 17 and the following items will have council members will need to step down it. I just wanted to note that each one will, which the first one is Councilmember Vicaro has 17.
I will open the public hearing. Again, have no request to speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. We'll hold off on the action. Our report, please. Paul?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. So Landscape Lighting Maintenance District Number Five was established to fund maintenance of public landscape and lighting within the Rancho Solano community. So in front of you tonight is a resolution approving the engineer's report with the annual assessment. There is an increase of $41 annually to build the required reserve for the district. The assessment to be collected will fund ongoing maintenance expenses and special projects. For this district, it will include landscape renovation, electric replacement, and irrigation repair. The proposed assessments is within the approved assessment range. Conducting a public hearing will complete the final step in the approval process for setting the 1920 assessment levels for this district. I can answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? Public hearing is opened. Don't have any request to speak cards. Entertain a motion to approve. Been moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? My motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number-
Next item will be Vice Mayor Bertoni and-
Item 18, Public Hearing and Resolution 2019-107 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the 2019-2020 Engineer's Report, confirming the boundaries and ordering the levy and collection of assessment, and providing for notice of hearing thereof for Maintenance District Number Seven, Rolling Hills. And Paul Pauschel is our presenter.
So Landscape Lighting Maintenance District Number Seven was established to fund maintenance of public landscape and lighting for the Rolling Hills neighborhood. In front of you tonight is a resolution approving the engineer's report with the annual assessment. For District Number Seven, there is an annual increase of $21.57 to offset an increase in water, labor costs, and maintenance costs. The assessments to be collected will fund ongoing maintenance expenses and will fund special projects, which will include landscape and irrigation repairs. The proposed assessments is within the approved assessment range for this district. Conducting the public hearing will complete the final step in the approval process for setting the 1920 assessment levels for this.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Have no request to speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak on this item-
We do have one request to speak on item 18.
We do have one request to speak on item 18. Oh, we do. Yes. David Thacker, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And I just handed out what he wanted distributed.
David, how could I forget you? Welcome aboard.
Could we start? My name is David Thacker. I live in Rolling Hills, Fairfield. The neighbors I have talked with and I do not object to paying for city services provided to us. We do object to paying for services that are not provided. This resolution deserves a no vote because of the following. Landscape care and city oversight are not adequate. The improvements supported by this resolution are not maintained as specified in city's resolutions or maintenance agreement. Landscape plants that have died due to the lack of care are rarely replaced. Broken and non-functional irrigation systems allow rarely replanted replacement plant to die soon after they're planted. Thousands of yards of city-controlled parking strip landscape are now barren because the plants have died. Some homes have only dirt where city landscape plants once grew. The city charges Rolling Hills property owners for irrigation water that regularly floods into street gutters while large areas of landscape wither and die due to lack of irrigation. The Public Work Department has stated landscape services will not be improved from what they are now. The assessments are not collected fairly inequitably. Rolling Hills homeowners will pay a 7.5% increase. The city contribution will not increase. Commercial properties in the district are not being increased. The city landscape agreement and Proposition 218 call for the assessment to be levied on city and school district property. This isn't being done. Over 1,000 homeowners in the district pay for to maintain the open space where cattle are grazed under license from the city. Neither the ranchers nor the city contribute towards those improvements. It appears the city keeps all the grazing income for other uses. That doesn't sound right. The engineer's report submitted on, as the basis of the city resolution 2019-68 is effective. There's not, and you have a copy of that. That's what I handed out. There is not enough time to speak on the report's shortcomings, therefore, I have prepared a separate package for you. It is a copy of the public records request previously given to the city manager and the head of public works. I have not yet received the requested information, and the city response to this information request has been delayed for the maximum time allowed by law. Most city landscape improvements are of no special benefit to properties in District Seven. The majority of improvements paid for by this assessment are located on Hillborne Road and in open space. The general benefit to all Hillborne Road and open space property must be segregated by law and removed from consideration of any special benefit to Rolling Hills parcels. Hillborne Road is now a busy four-lane freeway commuter relief route. The improvements on Hillborne Road and open space are of general benefit to the public at large. The resolution is not legal. Under provisions of California Proposition 218, in order to continue this assessment at some time in the past, either a unanimous or a majority vote of all stakeholders must have occurred.
Paul, would you conclude, please?
The deputy city clerk has advised the city has no record of any election. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. City Attorney? First, I'll go to Paul, and you were listening to what the speaker had to say.
Yeah, I can address a few of them. I didn't quite write fast enough to maybe address all of the concerns addressed by Mr. Thacker. As far as the level of landscape maintenance, there's a few things that we've been doing. Obviously, we definitely want residents and those that the issues, such as broken irrigation, to report those to public work, and we do send out inspectors or crew to go out there and assess and make repairs. Or as far as landscaping that has died or needs to be replaced, we're actively doing that as well. So recently, operation staff met with the Landscape Maintenance Committee person that's part of the Rolling Hills Neighborhood Association and determined areas for replacement in the next year, and they do that each year. We're also planning to have a landscape architect assist staff in developing a long-term replacement plan for landscaping, as well as to replace some of the irrigation that's kind of old and needs to be replaced.
Councilman Tim, and then I'm going to go to the city attorney shortly. Go ahead.
Okay, but Paul, this is Steve, sir. When Mr. Thacker was talking about a city contribution, what money does the city put into the landscape?
Yeah, so for, and I think he might have touched on it, so for areas that have, are considered of general benefit, those can receive general fund contribution. So in the case of Rolling Hills, I believe it's the center median island that receives those. And so some, in a lot of these districts, it does receive some general fund to offset the contributions from our owners.
Okay, so he is recommending a no vote. So if we were to vote no, then the city would get no money. Would that then stop the maintenance of everything that's not for general use?
There would be no money to pay for under state law. Assessments have base general benefit for here's- special benefit. So we have not independently reviewed that report here. So this is continuation for many, many years of this particular assessment district, and so what we're doing is, again, affirming it each year with the updated engineer's report. So again, we believe the process has been- So again, we believe the process has been properly done in the past. We have looked at it previously. We have not independently looked at each time this is done, but the general process has been done correctly with respect to dividing the assessments between special benefits.
Okay, and then the last question is, I would suspect that this maintenance district predates 218. Prop 218 requirement? Because 218 has been...
Well, that's what I'm assuming, but I don't know that for sure. I'm assuming this goes... This does go way back in time.
Okay, and if it does, does 218 then kick in again?
Well, we'd have to follow procedures for 218 going forward, but it wouldn't have... The requirements would not have applied when this district...
Okay, all right. That answers that. Thank you, sir.
David, do you want to come back up, please? And we're suspending the four-minute rule now.
I can assure you that I research things. I research them real well and get legal advice. 218 is part of the California State Constitution, Article 13. It says clearly that once that was enacted by the legislature in about 1996, that any existing maintenance agreement had to go through and be redone and have a vote. And this board has not done that, and it's probably true of many of the other landscaping districts that have been acted tonight. I haven't researched them because this is a big project for me. But you're absolutely wrong, and it's very clear, and it's black and white. If you decide to go ahead with this and vote yes, you will be acting illegitimately, and it will cost you money because right now, the law will possibly, under court action, go back three years of refunds. If you act tonight and disregard the law, that's off the table. It could go back to 1988 when this came in.
Mr. Mayor, let me address this because I think my statement was misunderstood. What I said was if this district was first formed before Prop 218 at that time, it wouldn't have gone through a Prop 218 meeting. Prop 218 does apply now as we go forward to the district. And like I said, we initially had looked at these before that believed that were done properly. I would suggest maybe in this case that we continue this item, just so we'll give you a report at the next meeting as to the procedures that have been followed.
And if anybody would like my assistance in understanding things about the attorney for the city is not quite clear on, I'm more than happy to help.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Yeah, so if Mr. Thacker is correct and that 218 does apply, we now collect no money, so things will die because we're not going to spend the money. That's what will happen. I don't know... I'm leery if what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If 218 is a requirement going forward, and we do these as a matter of routine, correct? I mean, we have five or six tonight. But I don't want to be caught in a situation where we violate the law, and I believe our city attorney. But I'm also cognizant that summer's coming. These things don't happen overnight, the 218s, and that everything out there now will no longer be maintained or watered, and what's not a common area for the general use will die. Paul, is that... If what I'm saying is true for the law, Paul, you're in public works. You tell me. You shut the water off, and they're not pulling weeds and planting stuff. Everything dies, correct?
Yeah, the planting out there in all these districts are constantly maintained, so if we don't have funding to do so, then you're absolutely correct.
It'll stop.
Paul, we have time, time-wise here for two weeks, just so we can come back with the report.
Okay, I just want people to be aware. Number one, I want to make myself aware. If what he says is true, then the possibility is, depending on time, everything dies. And not just there because it would apply to every maintenance district, correct?
Well, yeah, I'm confident that's not going to be the case. But I, like I said, we will come back to you with the report that does...
I understand what Mr. Thacker's saying, but I guess I would say be careful what you ask for. I want to make sure we do it lawfully, but you get my point. All right, thank you.
Councilman Way, please.
Are there any reserves for this?
Yeah, there are some reserves. There's a required reserve amount. And so in this one, we're basically working to maintain the minimum reserve requirement.
Okay, but we can use those reserves until we get this done. Nothing's going to die, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's... So nothing's going to die. All right. And we do have general fund that we can use too and then repay the general fund. Yes?
Well, in turn, the...
We already have.
The problem is that the... If the general fund's going to pay for this, that's going to come out of the general fund. So that's the whole purpose of having the assessment district is that you can get monies from the effective and benefit of property owners.
But we have reserves for this, yeah?
And but when those... Once those reserves are expended, and if the district was not renewed, then you would back to having the general fund paying for those improvement.
Right. How much reserves? We have 15% in there, or how much is in the reserves? No.
So it looks like the required reserve for cash reserves are... The policy is 65% of annual expense.
65%?
Right. And for repair reserves, a reserve policy of 25% of average annual expense. So for Rolling Hills, the proposed cash reserve for 1920 would be approximately $224,000, and for the repair reserve would be $70,000.
Well, that's about nine months.
Well, there... So the other thing...
I'm not saying we're going to have to pay it down. I'm just saying we have a little elbow room, is my point. If we don't do this right now, because I'd like to do it legally, all this, whatever you say I go with, but we want to make sure that it's right. And the other question just that I have that I'd like answered, if we could, please. This has been around for at least 20 years, right? This district... Why don't we have a replacement program in place right now?
So we do. We meet annually. Our staff meets annually with each neighborhood, each away designated person. And so they've been doing that over the last several years, at least that I've seen my time here. And then we do have a long-term plan that we're going to be establishing.
Okay, yeah, because I know I get calls and concerns from other, you know, areas that have these in place, and so it concerns me a little bit if we don't have it. It sounds like we do, maybe just freshen it up so we're on it a little more. Thank you.
Hold off, please. Hold off, please. Councilman Carl.
Let Mr. Thacker speak, and then I'll... Thank you, Mr.
I just want to clarify that there's actually two killer issues here. Not only Prop 218's real expense, it was a cover-all for all the 13s that were left out. The cities were not accusing anybody here, but the cities were going behind Prop 13 and extracting money. And so they felt in 1990s to end that by 218. And the legislators who drew 218 up were very specific, and that's why I said that the attorney is incorrect because I've read that proposition. So it's not only the idea that there was never a ballot which is required, but it is the segregation of special benefit and general benefit, and that's the harder, more difficult. Now, 218 says it is up to this agency to... It is... The burden of proof is on this agency to prove what special benefits are, and that you must be very careful with that. And I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Thank you.
Mr. Thacker, yeah, and my inclination, colleagues, is that we're not prepared to take action this evening, and that the city attorney's recommendation that we continue this item should be our course of action.
Yeah, we'll come back with report to the council at the next meeting.
And how long do we need?
Well, I think we will have a report back to you in two weeks. If we need some more time, we can tell you. But I'm expecting... We'll have... One of our Prop 218 experts will look at it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Real quick, Mayor. Okay, yeah. First of all, Mr. Thacker, thank you for your comments, but I do have confidence in our city attorney. I want to make that clear. Second of all, this kind of rings of what happened out in Cordelia a few years ago when a gentleman came and talked about it. So that's my concern, is, you know, what's happening with our landscaping out there because that was a real issue out there. And if this is a real issue again, I think we need to look at who's doing this out there. But yeah, it's just déjà vu for me, so...
And then I would caution us, colleagues. If we go into a protracted dry spill again, the fire hazard becomes even greater. So continuing this for two weeks should be our course of action. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved by Councilman Way, seconded by Councilman Carl. All in favor? My motion is carried. Okay, thank you. We turn then to our next item, please. Madam Vice Mayor, if you would come up, because I have to excuse myself. Item nineteen, please.
Item nineteen, public hearing and resolution 2019-108 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the 2019-2020 engineers report confirming the boundaries and ordering the levy and collection of assessments and providing for notice of hearing thereof for Maintenance District Number Eight, Olive Estates. Our presenter is Ryan Pangneeman from Public Works.
Vice Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go to our city attorney. I'll let him talk to our city manager for...
Just want to make sure that Councilman Way doesn't have to abstain on this one, too. Are we sure? Yeah, just want to double-check that. Yeah, if it's within 500 feet, I would have you also abstaining on this one, just to be safe. Yeah, I don't have it on the list, but I'd be good.
And Greg, my question is, sir, is if we're going to put off the previous one, then why are we going to just go through the rest of them if we're looking at a 218 issue? If we put off that one, then why don't we put off the rest? Does that...
We could do that. I think that... I mean, there were obviously objections made to this one that won't be made to the other ones.
Oh, I can guarantee you that.
But again, I think you want to make... You know, we can double-check each of these to come back with you as to, you know, making... Confirming that there are complaints with Prop 218. So that would not be a problem to continue the remaining ones and then come back.
It's unfortunate that the Vice Mayor didn't.
We have scheduled this well enough in advance to leave some leeway here to come back and report.
Yeah, Pam, so you know, we held off on the previous one that you had to recuse yourself. So we have the same set of circumstances going forward.
We heard general fund out there. We started listening.
Okay. And I think we would be foolhardy to continue approving these when we just said, oh, we got a problem with one, and it's identical to what's going forward. I think the rest of them should be put off as well.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion to that effect?
Hearing, so we should have a motion to... It would be a motion to continue items. We would have items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-two items.
Do I hear a motion? Okay, so Councilman Tim has motioned to continue items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Carl. All in favor? Motion carries. And that is all of the business that is... Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Councilmember Tim had a request.
Yes. The funeral for Coach Ed Surplus from Vannan High School was today. And actually, I'd like the mayor... He was very, very close. Mayor? We're getting ready to adjourn, and I want to do it in memory of Coach Ed Surplus from Vannan High School. And I want to give you this opportunity to say a word. I remember him when, obviously, I was there, and he was one heck of a gentleman, and his funeral was very well attended today. But Mayor, what I'd like to do is close our meeting in his honor, and if you'd say a couple of words, I'd appreciate it.
And thank you very much for bringing me back in. Ed Surplus was the first coach, the first athletic director in the Travis Unified School District. A local guy born here, went to Solano Community College, and then went to Weber State. He was a Marine Corps reservist, and the school opened a year before I arrived. And my first introduction to Ed Surplus was looking out on the athletic field. There was no grass in those days, and I thought I was back in Army basic training because those football players and other athletes were out there. They were doing calisthenics. Remarkable what Ed Surplus was able to put together. Local guy does very well. And one of the highlights of the service today was having one of his athletes, Carter Camel. Carter Camel is about six feet five, African-American, and he was the first Travis Unified School District NFL player. And I wanted to share a couple of quick comments with you. His speech today was a tribute to what many of us consider to be a really fine educator, someone like Rick Carlisle. And he brought with him the letter that Coach Surplus wrote him when Carter graduated from high school. And the letter had a statement in there. "If you work hard, if you apply yourself, you can play in the NFL." And he was signed by the San Francisco 49ers. He weighed 190 pounds. After they signed him and they gave him his bonus, $2,500, a check, they said, oh, we made a mistake. We thought you weighed 205 pounds. You're too light. And he said, I never cashed that check. Years later, after he retires from his professional football career, he goes to work in New York City in the insurance industry. And after a couple of months, it was one of the big insurance companies, the HR director, Human Resources Director came... Went into his office and said, Carter, you don't have the background to do what you're doing, so I'm going to have to let you go. And he said, oh, pardon me. I had this letter from my high school football coach that says... And then he repeated it. And the guy said, really? Well, Carter Camel has had a very successful pro football career. He had a very successful insurance career, lives in Chicago, and he and his colleagues came back for the fiftieth reunion in October, and he told that story. So all of us there, and there are lots of cheers today, all of us there are reminded of what it takes. And it's too bad that Mr. Russell and his family had to leave because I would love to have shared that with you. But before we leave, Ed Surplus had quite an impact upon not only those of us who are in the Travis Unified School District, but on this whole community, too. But Mr. City Attorney, I ask you before the meeting this evening if you would respond to a question from John Takahuchi, and the question deals with real estate and closed session discussions.
Right. And the question was, what is the basis for the council to meet in closed session for real estate transactions? And state law under the Brown Act does authorize closed sessions. You were talking about negotiating the price of property. So that allows us to go into closed session. Obviously, the reason for that is so the other side doesn't know what price we're authorizing to negotiate. So ultimately, when the deal is done, though, when it comes back after being negotiated, the contract has to be on the agenda and fully disclosed to the public as to what the terms of the contract were. At that point in time, the public can object, and it's not binding until you approve that contract in closed session. And one last thing, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear on the record tonight for the minutes, all the hearings on the assessment districts that we continued, they are being continued to the first meeting in June and so that we don't have to renotice public hearings. And if there's a need to continue again, we'll report it at that time, but I'm expecting we'll have a report to you at the first meeting in June.
So there's no other business before this, buddy? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.